So really, go ahead and get started. I know people are still taking their seats. We'll probably have some folks joining us. So welcome, and thank you for coming to this town hall. I want to take a few minutes to walk everyone through our agenda for today. So as soon as I'm done, I'll be turning it over to Fred Dyson and then Jason Bakinsad, the Chief of Staff to the Mayor, to give a presentation. Fred on his proposal, and then Jason on the municipality's fiscal situation and provide some historical context. After this presentation, each of the Assembly sponsors of the three tax proposals before the body for a vote on January 14th will have five minutes each to go through their proposals. Lastly, we'll finish the evening with public testimony and discussion. We all came here today because we have a vested interest in the future of the municipality. We all know and discuss the two biggest issues facing us today: public safety and homelessness. Lots of those discussions happen at our favorite coffee shop or around the dinner table. The Assembly hopes to provide some general financial context to this conversation and engage in a dialogue with our community about our future. After the presentations, we'll provide copies of the various proposals and turn it over to public testimony and discussion. Each person interested in speaking will have two minutes. Feel free to ask questions if you have them. We will keep track of your questions and respond to as many of them as possible at the close of public testimony. For folks who don't want to testify or who run out of time, there will be an opportunity to vote on a series of questions at the back of the room. There are two main questions. First, based on the information you learned today and in our efforts to become more financially independent, are you likely to support a new revenue proposal? And second, how would you rank the proposals we have before us on January 14th? Volunteers with name tags are standing by to assist with voting. Lastly, I'd like to invite everyone to attend the regular Assembly meeting on January 14th, where we will have a public hearing on all three of these proposals. The meeting is in the Assembly chambers here in the library. Public testimony will begin now earlier than 6:00 p.m., but likely not before 6:00 p.m. If you can't attend, please email all of us in advance with any additional thoughts at WWMAS@Gmail.org. With that, I want to turn it over to Assembly Member Fred Dyson for his presentation.
Thanks Felix. Please pardon my casual dress. I requested all my weight off the emergency room while we're going to heat gauge here right now. That's got to be a bit distracting. But thanks for being here. So in my view, public safety is one of the top, if not the top, responsibilities for government. And so I've looked very carefully at where are the holes and gaps in our public safety function. And I'm going to show, I'll put up slide number one. You're just going to listen. What do I do? My nerve's on. All right. So this is a schematic, remember I'm an engineer. So think of where it says Anchorage Criminal Population. Think about a pipeline. So here, crime occurs, the criminals are in it, and then the pipeline has leaks in it and gets thinner and thinner. And so the first one here is we're way short of cops, police officers, and the administrative staff. So we have about, even with 100 that this mayor has added, we have about half the number that most cities are size. That means crimes don't get investigated, lots of them fall through the cracks and so on. Here, we don't have enough prosecutors. I just saw a study that Mr. Gates came up with, and I think it said something like 124 cases per prosecutor. Ours have 250, and some of them up to 300. So the result is that many cases don't get taken to court, a whole lot of them get dismissed. In my proposal, the Assembly information thing, it talks about how many per year. But so cases are getting dropped because they're not fully resourced. And it's also happening on the state level. Just not enough prosecutors, courts staff, court time available. So the next thing here, for generations, for generations, the state has handled felony prosecutions here in our area, and the city handles the misdemeanor. The state, because their blood are showing more reluctance to take the felony cases. So the felony cases are being ignored or pushed off and so on. In addition, all the forensic, most of the forensic work is done by the state ladder. They just lost their director, they're way down on staff, they've been years behind in processing breakouts. And now we're having the problem that the processing of people with drug-related issues, which is often a blood sample, are taking months to come back, and up to eight months. And so you can imagine what that does with prosecuting of those cases. Now because of the lack of prosecutors and court action, our police officers are arrested the same guy for property crimes or shoplifting. They're busting for the third time, and he's never gone to trial on the first one, which would have triggered a more restrictive arrest. So those are causing problems in our system. Courts are overwhelmed, and then, as you all would know, a significant part of our criminal population have drug and alcohol and mental health issues. And there's never been a time since I've been in the state, nearly 60 years, when availability of mental health treatment and substance abuse has been lower vis-à-vis the number of potential people there. So we have judges giving court ordered treatment, and there are months waiting for the person to get a bed and so on and so forth, and sometimes never. And then the state is short of prison space, and you all have seen that in my view, unwisely, they closed the Palmerdale Prison. And now they're back to talking about sending people outside, all of which are suboptimal decisions, when we don't have the prison space. So you can see what happens. All those choke points in the pipe, all those leaks, the people who didn't get to court or a police opening and so on, ended up back in our population. And some of the police get recycled back on the street to keep doing whatever it was they were doing. So my proposal is to have a 3% sales tax that has a term limit of six years to raise funds to deal with this. And the administration, who have been very helpful, are now telling me that 3% is going to produce 110, maybe 140 million dollars a year, which can make a significant difference here. Remember, probably for a million dollars, you could probably hire, train, and equip six cops. Right? But the other half of that revenue, this bill sends to property tax relief, and that will end up being 350, maybe 600 dollars per property owner. This is what we're trying to do. Those of you concerned about the impact on poor people, there's a huge list of things that are not taxed, and most of them are all basic food and medicine and so on and so forth. I'm going to leave, go back to the hospital. Mr. Gates, who is very knowledgeable, will answer any questions that come up for you. Fred Dyson, 39, most base lowercase, is my email at Gmail. My phone number is 9528800. Thank you.
This is Mr. Bakinsad and the Mayor to give a presentation on Anchorage's fiscal suggestion. Jason, you have good hands?
We'll see. Thank you. And as Felix said, my name is Jason Bakinsad. I'm the Mayor's Chief of Staff. But I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, because I think this is a very important conversation. And it's one of the things that, we live this every single day. We go through this budget, and we go through everything that we're going to be talking about. So I think it's extremely important that hopefully by the end of tonight, and after my presentation, I hope, more people are better educated and better informed in terms of where we spend our money, how we spend it, and what money we spend, so that as we move forward, people can make an informed decision about what we want the city to look like. And if it's do nothing, you're making the conscious decision to do nothing. But there are other options out there as well. So I was just going to run through a couple of things of what I'm going to talk about tonight. Essentially, our 2020 budget, kind of go through where we spend our money, what color of money, what different buckets of money we use to pay for that budget, what are some of the challenges that we have seen and that we are constantly experiencing as we deal with the issues the state is continuing to grapple with and some other things. And then finally, just an idea that has been percolating for a number of years, it's a Wally Hickel, old Wally Hickel idea, but it's something that this mayor has kind of advocated for since he's been in office. So with that, I wanted to get into the 2020 budget and hit just a couple of highlights and just mention a couple of things. One, our budget is balanced every single year. We do not run deficits, we do not overspend, we run balanced budgets. And as a result of that, we're AAA bond rated, which is important as, you know, we go through and put bond propositions in front of voters to say, hey, we'd like to spend X amount of dollars improving our roads, or X amount of dollars for our parks, or our police, or fire. It's very important that we keep that AAA bond rating, because it means that as we go out and borrow this money, we're getting it at the cheapest rate possible. So a couple of budget focus areas that I think I just want to make folks aware of. Number one, public safety. In this budget, we're adding additional police officers, and we're beginning to really expand the non-sworn side of the police department. And that's essentially the dispatch folks and the records clerks that, you know, people interact with. As a result of adding 100 new officers over the last four and a half years, it's becoming much more difficult for dispatch to be able to continue to keep up, and records clerks to be able to continue to keep up with everything that 100 new officers are bringing. The other important piece is, you know, this year was the first year that we have been able to, we fully operationalized funding for the police and fire academies. Historically, the way that it, we handled this were kind of as one-off costs that we did if we had enough money one year. We all believe that that's the wrong decision to make, that we need to make sure that we are funding police and fire academies year in and year out, so that we make sure that we have a fully staffed public safety sector here. Second is housing and homelessness. Again, this year, we made the decision to fully fund year-round emergency shelter. That is kind of the core, I think, basic responsibility of government, is to make sure that people are safe. So we wanted to make sure that folks have at least the shelter to go to, or the shelter space to go to. But that's not the entire story, and that's not where we want to end it. So we are also working with our partners in the private sector, in the philanthropic area, to essentially figure out how do we make housing available permanently. And we're going to hopefully be making a lot of investments there, so that folks aren't going to a shelter, they're going to a permanent house, which is really the best way to end the cycle of homelessness. Third is economic development. We've done a lot over the last year, and hopefully will continue doing over the next couple of years, of incentivizing housing development in areas of town that have historically not either kept up or have seen very little. The most recent example is with some of our downtown incentives that we're doing, and seeing some new investment in the downtown area. And then finally is innovative investments. This last year, we also installed the largest rooftop solar panels in Alaska on the Eagan Center. Those are innovative ways for us to invest and make sure that we get a good return. Those solar panels will be paid off within seven years in terms of savings, and we're going to continue to see savings from that. So with that, I'll kind of jump more into the actual budget. So every single year, we pass a budget sometime around Thanksgiving. This year, we passed it on, the Assembly passed it on November 19th. For the total direct cost, it was 529 million dollars in this year's budget, and it passed 11 to 0. And that's a big deal. Like, we went back and looked, and we can't find a time where an Assembly budget was passed unanimously. So we worked with the Assembly collaboratively to figure out how do we produce a budget that meets the needs of Anchorage residents. And I think the fact that it was passed 11 to 0 speaks volumes that hopefully we're getting closer to accomplishing that goal. So before we kind of get in, I have a couple of trivia questions, and I'm going to incentivize folks to participate. I have gift cards to Moose's Tooth. So with that, the first question is, and I'm going to need all three. Can anyone name the three largest departments by budget? You got two of the three. You got two of the three. You got two of the three. Two of the three. You need a hint? They do a lot of road plowing in the wintertime. That's close enough. It's maintenance and operations. So it's APD, AFD, and maintenance and operations. So Ron, second question, you can double your winnings. So it's APD, AFD, maintenance and operations. Can you tell me what the total budget of those departments within $5 million? Three of them combined, all three of them combined. You're a little high. Closer. Closer. I'll give you that. I'll give you that. That is 263 million is what we spend on those three departments. So when I get done, I'll find both of you and give you these gift cards. So I'm going to kind of walk through each of these large departments and kind of talk about what percentage of the budget it is. And I'm going to start with APD. So APD, it's about 23% of our municipal budget is spent on cops. What does that equal in terms of actual dollars? About 121 million dollars of our budget goes towards APD. What does that look like in terms of staffing? There's 425 police officers that we currently have on the street, give or take a couple on any given day if someone's retired or someone's graduated the academy. But I do want to take a moment, and I'll reemphasize something that Assembly Member Dyson said. We're about the 65th largest city in the United States. That puts us relatively close to places like Cincinnati, Ohio, Greensboro, North Carolina, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. If you look at all three of those cities, those cities have between 750 and 1,000 cops. So just keep that in mind as we go through this conversation and think about, you know, how much more do we want to invest in our public safety if cities that are relatively our same size have twice as many officers as we do? And again, we're going to continue to expand our non-sworn. We're at about 160. We'd like to continue to grow that, so that they can be, people can be more responsive to phone calls and requests for information in terms of police reports and things like that. Now, just in terms of APD dispatch, they answered over 290,000 calls in 2019. That equates to about 33 every hour of every day of the year. They're on the phone a lot, and they're responding a lot. In addition, police officers made, just between the months of January and November 2019, over 40,000 traffic stops. And that could be anything from speeding, running red lights, DUI, a whole host of things. That equates to about one every 12 minutes. So we're out there. Are we doing as much as we want? Probably not. But we're doing a lot. In terms of how quickly we respond, on priority one, responses to those are typical calls that come in, and there is an actual crime still in progress, there's been a bad accident, there's actually injured individuals. Our response time is four minutes. Now, I think everyone in this room can say that, you know, they know somebody, or they've been, they've called APD, and it's taken an hour or two or longer for us to show up. And I think that's the type of investment that we're still searching to try to make. That is something that we desperately want to improve. We want to make sure that when somebody does call APD, that they can respond quicker. But with the current force that we have, and the current population, and the current size of our city, we just don't have that capability to respond as quickly as I think all of us would like. But there are a couple of things that we're trying to do more innovatively to be more responsive. One of the things that we launched this year was, we now do all of our patrols based on community council boundaries, so that the same people essentially are assigned to the same area day in and day out. And that's important, because they get used to that area, they know the people, they interact with the people. And I would encourage you, if you see people in your area and you see police officers walking around, get up, say hi to them. They want to engage, they want to have conversations with you. So continue to do that. The other thing is, we're doing a lot in terms of partnerships with other law enforcement. One of the other things that we were successful in doing is getting a high-intensity drug trafficking area designation, or HIDA designation. We were the last state in the country to get a designation. But essentially what it does is, there is some federal funding that's provided that allows us to more collaboratively work with the FBI, the airport police, state troopers, other police departments around the state, to do a better job of interdicting, you know, drug sales that maybe come through the airport or things like that. And I hope, over the next couple of months, there'll be more and more information that comes out in terms of how successful that program is being. But we're going to continue to look for those ways to work more collaboratively with other law enforcement to accomplish these goals. So that's APD. The next largest department I think everyone got was AFD. What does that look like? That's about 19% of the municipality's budget. What does that look like in terms of dollars? About 98 million dollars. We have about 116 firefighters and EMTs with that, and about 58 firefighters, paramedics. And in terms of AFD dispatch call breakdowns, there's no additional incentives. But I'm curious, if somebody just yelled out a number, how many structured fire calls do you think AFD responded to in 2019?
Chief Hetrick can't answer.
Chief Hetrick can't answer. 100? Responded to 974 structured fire calls. How many cardiac-related events do you think AFD responded to last year? Everyone's a little high there. It was about 1,900 cardiac-related calls that we responded to. And for both of those, for both of these, these are life and death events, right? So again, we do a very good job in terms of where we have our fire stations set up around town, and as a result, again, for these guys, it's an average, about four minutes from the time a call comes in until someone is on scene at one of these events. And that's very important, to make sure that, you know, every second when you're talking about a cardiac-related event matters. So we're very proud of that investment. But again, same with AFD that I talked about with APD. There's more that we can do. Because if you, this next number that I'm going to display, I'm not even going to ask, there were 25,000 other emergency medical calls that AFD responded to in 2019. 25,000. And that ranges from someone slipped and broke an arm, someone had an allergic reaction to something and they need to get there, a whole host of other things. But 25,000 calls that AFD responds to. And again, for dispatch, they received about 120,000 calls for service. And then one of the other investments on this end that plays into some of the homelessness stuff, but we are trying to think of other innovative ways, and one of the things that we created was the Community Outreach Referral and Education Team, or the Core Team. Essentially, it's one person right now. We hope to build it out over the course of the year, but essentially, this person's job is to identify who are the users that call essentially 911 the most, but have essentially what we would deem non-medical emergencies. They just don't have anywhere else to call, and they're just constantly calling. So we engage with them. We figure out, why are you continuing to call? And we've signed these people up to kind of have continuous interaction with this person. We've seen a drastic decline in the number of calls of the folks that we've been able to engage so far, that's resulted in roughly about $500,000 in savings that we would normally do if these people had called and we had sent out a full fire rig or an ambulance. And I think that's the important part, that we want to really try to get away and lessen the need of folks that are calling in non-emergency situations, because in the past, what we would do, we would send an ambulance, we would send a fire rig. And then all of a sudden, maybe an actual major emergency would happen, and that rig would be out of service. So we need to continue to work on this, and hopefully we'll begin to see a lot of good changes here. The other department that we mentioned as the third largest was maintenance and operations. It's only about 8% of our budget, so you can see we're starting to decline pretty rapidly in terms of the overall share. It was about $43 million in terms of our overall budget. And maintenance and operations is broken down into about five different categories or offices. The first that I think probably most people are most familiar with is our streets, which is essentially, it's a 24/7 operation from mid-October until the end of May. They're out plowing the roads, they're out hauling the snow away. Just last year, as you can see, there were 39,500 truckloads of snow that they removed from municipally-owned roads. And then obviously, in the summertime, they're not moving snow, so what are they doing? Well, they're going out, they're fixing potholes, they're fixing drains. Just last year, they fixed 13,000, over 13,000 potholes around town. About 95% of those were fixed within 24 hours of either being notified, or street maintenance actively looking for them and making sure that they are going out and fixing them. The other, one of the other departments within this is our fleet maintenance. So they maintain all of our vehicles. We have about 1,000 municipal vehicles, other heavy operating machinery. About 500 of those are police vehicles that we want to maintain and have in good working order. We have facilities, we have about 200 municipally-owned facilities and parks that they're responsible for also maintaining. Streetlights, we have over 16,000 municipal streetlights that we maintain, that they're responsible for. And then on the communication side, they're also responsible, and they have a very big job, it's very important, in terms of making sure that all of the radio and other equipment is interoperable between AFD, APD, the state, the feds, our Emergency Operations Center. And that's obviously extremely important, as we all realize, we just passed the year anniversary of the 7.0 earthquake in 2018. So we want to make sure that these guys have the ability to make sure that, you know, if something like that happens again, everybody has the ability to make sure they're speaking and talking to each other. So combined, what does it look like? APD, AFD, and MNO account for almost 50%, 49.7% of our budget. 50% goes towards what I think everyone would say are the most important items that a government can do, which is provide safety and make sure our streets and others are safe for people to get around. That equates to about 263 million of our 529 million dollar budget. Now, what's the other 50%? I'm going to break it down into a couple of different buckets. The first is essentially- The first is essentially what I would consider dedicated voter-approved items. And I'll go through a couple of these. Debt service. Those are essentially voter-approved bonds. So, every single year, we'll put forward five or six bond proposals if they're approved. We have to make sure that every single year, we're paying those back again. I'm going to go back to, you know, we have a triple-A bond rating. We need to be responsible in terms of paying back our obligations. The Convention Center Reserve, essentially, this was dedicated funding in terms of the bed tax that was approved about fifteen years ago. And about one-third of the bed tax goes towards paying off the Denina Center, but also setting up a capital rainy day fund, so that when repair, replacement of items within the Denina Center have to take place into the future, that the money's there to do that. Visit Anchorage, this is the other portion of the bed tax that was dedicated by voters. They get four percent of the bed tax to promote tourism and encourage folks to come and visit Anchorage. And as we have seen with the bed tax, we've been, they've been very successful over the last couple of years. Tourism has been growing, but the bed tax has been continually rising in the neighborhood of four or five percent every year. So, they do a lot with that. Another, this isn't voter-dedicated, but it's essentially, the cost of doing businesses isn't any major city. So, within the municipal manager's budget, we have a risk department. We set aside money every single year to make sure that if there's workers' comp or general liability claims, if someone gets hurt as a result of an action by a municipal employee, that we have money available to pay any outstanding issue with that. So, it's just a fact of being a large, large city. And then finally, is, within the Public Works Administration, there's dedicated voter-approved money that goes towards both Eagle River and Chugiac, that voters in those areas have said, "We want to tax ourselves and spend money in a certain way." And then, LRSs, which stand for Limited Road Service Areas on the hillside. So, you know, if you're on the hillside, you voted to say, "I want to tax myself a certain amount to do basic road maintenance," because you're outside of the general area where we, we provide that service. So, when you combine those, it's about twenty percent of our budget. So, just looking at AFD, AFD, MNO, and those dedicated voter-approved areas, we're about three-hundred-and-sixty-six million dollars of our budget, but it's almost seventy percent of our budget go to these items. But, I assume that the fact that we're known for our world-class trail system, our world-class park system, people want to invest in that. People want to invest in our public transit system. People want to invest in our health department. People want to make sure that we have prosecutors in our municipal attorney's office. So, this is where the rest of the money goes from our budget. Public transit, our IT, parks and rec, economic and community development. Between these six departments, it's about another twenty percent of our budget goes just to these. And the remaining seventeen departments of our budget, that include this very building that we're in, the library, the traffic department who's responsible for maintaining and making sure that all of our traffic signals in the entire municipality work and are operational, our planning department, we want to make sure as we continue to grow and invest that we're doing it in a conscientious way. Our purchasing department, we want to make sure that anytime that we put an RFP out or anytime we go out to do any work, that the residents of Anchorage can have confidence that we're doing it in an open and transparent way. So, we're going to continue to invest in these, these areas. But as I said, all of these departments, the remaining twenty-three departments, make up about thirty percent of our budget, which is only about a hundred-and-sixty-three million dollars. So, that is kind of our budget. I'm going to talk about, a little bit now, about the different buckets that we use to pay for all of these things. And I'm going to take a little bit of a chance and see if I can't do this. It's going to be a challenge. But, we have a tax cap. I think everyone has heard about that. It's in our charter, it's Charter Amendment fourteen-point-zero-three, it was approved by the voters in the early nineteen-eighties. And, this is one way that the residents of Anchorage have said, "We're only going to allow the government to tax folks within this tax cap number a certain amount." So, how do we get to that number year in and year out? Essentially, we start with the approved previous-year number. And then, we add a couple of things into it that are all in the charter. The first is, we take the average increase in, the consumer price index, it's essentially inflation, over the preceding five fiscal years, we add that in. Then we add in the percentage growth or loss in the population of Anchorage, add that in. And then, any new construction or property improvements from the previous year, in terms of the additional tax revenue that it would bring in, we add that in. We then take whatever previous year's voter-approved bonds and the cost to repay those were, we add that in. And then the final one is, any voter-approved special taxes that voters say, "We're willing to tax ourselves, but we want it to go underneath the tax cap essentially as property tax relief." We put that in, and we get the current tax cap number. So, this year, when you do all of those things, the current total amount that we would be legally allowed to tax property tax owners here in Anchorage is three-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars. However, we do not tax property taxpayers three-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars. We have another legal limit of two-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollars that we are only allowed to raise through property taxes. So, where does that other, essentially close to eighty-six, eighty-seven million dollars come from? Well, again, it comes from dedicated voter-approved, for the most part, areas. And I'll run through them. And again, it's about eighty-seven million dollars. There's some aircraft at some of the municipally-owned airports that we own, that we pull in some revenue. PILT, which is Payment in lieu of Taxes, there's some state and federal government properties that pay a PILT, for the most part, they are not required to pay us any taxes, they're exempt from, from paying property taxes. Marijuana, last year was the first year, as a result of voters approving the sale of marijuana here in Anchorage, that all of the revenue that was raised from those sales was put underneath the tax cap. So essentially, four million dollars went in this, this last year, and as we go forward, to reduce property taxes. We have a motor vehicle rental tax that people pay anytime they rent a vehicle. We have an automobile tax. And the most recent one that I think people probably know the most about was the ten-cent fuel excise tax that was implemented by the Assembly. That goes towards offsetting property taxes. And then finally, we have MUS and NISA payments, which are essentially the payments that our utilities pay based on the amount of property that they use or own. Essentially, they would pay, it's what they would pay if they were a private, private individual or private company, essentially. So, all of these would, if any of these went away, it would mean property taxes would, would go up. So, all of these offset property taxes. So, when you take into account property tax and non-property tax that are all within the tax cap, about seventy-four percent of the budget is paid through that way. And that number, like I said, is about three-hundred-and-seventy-seven million. But if you remember back to my slide where the core services that we provide, the total amount there was about three-hundred-and-sixty-six million dollars in terms of APD, AFD, Maintenance and Operations, and the voter-dedicated funding that we have within our budget, is basically paid this way. So, where does the remaining twenty-five percent come from? That's essentially what we consider outside of the tax cap. About twenty-six percent, about a hundred-and-forty-three million, and it comes from a variety of sources. We have a number of fees, licenses, permit fees that people pay, you know, if they're wanting to do some type of new construction or other things, open up a business, those types of things, quite so, about thirty-seven million. We have some other taxes and payment in lieu of taxes from, from other folks, intergovernmental charges, contributions and transfers. This is essentially about thirty-five years ago when we sold, Anchorage sold, Anchorage Telephone Utility. The proceeds of that went into a municipal trust fund that every single year spins off about four-and-a-quarter percent for general government services. And I would just add that with the upcoming, hopefully, transaction, final transaction of the MLMP sale to Chugatch, the same thing will likely happen here. There are only two things that we could use that money for, which is either pay down other debt or put it into the municipal trust fund. So, based on this year's approved budget, we would, we assumed that we were putting all two-hundred-and-thirty million dollars of the proceeds into the municipal trust fund. So hopefully, as we continue to move out and if we continue to get seven to ten percent in terms of our returns on those investments, this number will continue to rise as well. We get a little federal and state revenue, I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. And then fines and forfeitures, essentially the fines and speeding tickets and things like that, that the police issue. And then we have other investment income and special assessments. So that's essentially the remaining amount. Had that slide in there twice. So where does that, so where do we compare to other cities? Is a question that I think we get asked quite a bit. And every single year, the District of Columbia does a nationwide comparison of the tax rates and tax burdens of the largest city in every single state. So it takes, it essentially compares fifty-one cities around, around the country. The, the most recent one that was just issued earlier, in 2019, I can't say earlier, this year, last year, was for 2017. And essentially, the way that they looked at this is, they looked at kind of the major tax groups. So, incomes, income, sales, automobile, and property. And said, "How does everyone rate with each other?" The average median income in Anchorage is about seventy-eight thousand dollars. So, I took the seventy-five-thousand-dollar graph or spreadsheet that they used, and as you can see, we're dead last in terms of our tax rate and our tax burden overall when you compare these four major taxes. Again, just to kind of reiterate that point, when you look at it in terms of a percentage of income, it's as high as seventeen-point-three percent. But again, as I mentioned, Alaska's lowest, as a percent of income, it's four-point-four percent. And none of this, this study does not take into effect that we are also the only state in the country that receives a dividend from our government just for being a resident of this, of the state. So, as I mentioned, I was also going to talk about a couple of the challenges that we are continuing to have to deal with, and what that looks like. A couple of years ago, about ten years ago, some graduate students at the University of Alaska looked at, they were looking at the long-term ramifications of Anchorage's tax cap and spending limit. But one of the interesting components that came out of that was that, in the mid-nineteen-eighties, about forty-two percent of the municipality's budget was funded by the state government. Forty-two percent in the mid-nineteen-eighties. That equated to a little over, probably about fifty-five to sixty million dollars in terms of what the, the state provided the municipality. What is it today? As I mentioned a little bit earlier, it's less than one percent when you include, when you exclude what the federal government provides for us. It's less than one percent. And where, where are the biggest, where are those differences coming from? I think, hopefully, most people are maybe aware of essentially, the Community Assistance Program or Revenue Sharing that the state historically provided. It's essentially just funds that are provided to municipalities and boroughs around the, around the state to provide basic public services. Here in Anchorage, in 2006, we received about, and I know some of this is probably hard to see, we received about twenty-three million dollars. This last year, we received four-point-five million dollars from the state. It's a decrease of almost eighteen million dollars, or eighty percent. And I just mentioned that, as I was talking about kind of the, what money falls under the tax cap and what money doesn't. This is all money that falls outside of the tax cap. So anytime that this type of money goes away, there's no ability for the municipality to recover that money through property taxes. We just can't do it, we're not legally allowed. So, the only thing that we have to do is cut services at some place within our municipal government. Another area that's been in the news a lot is the school district and the issue of the school bond debt reimbursement. A lot of the conversation has been focused around the fact that twenty and thirty years ago, the state made a commitment to municipalities and cities around the state, that we were going to, the state was going to be there to help cities pay for improvements to schools. And just in the last couple of years, they've really started backing away from that. And what does that look like? This year alone, it means, because of the fifty percent cut in what they were supposed to pay, that means that Anchorage is going to have to figure out a way to pay for twenty-one million dollars of bonds that were approved by voters, with the understanding that the state would be there in the nineties and early two thousands. Now, that twenty-one million dollar number has gone down a little bit, because the ASD has been able to move some things around and found some, they didn't necessarily spend all of the money that they had the previous year. So that number's looking like, it's going to be about sixteen-and-a-half million dollars this year. But what does that mean? On one of these, on this type of issue, the municipality can tax above the tax cap for these, this item. What does that do? It means that there will probably be about a forty-eight dollar per one-hundred-thousand dollars of assessed value in a property tax increase this year, just to pay for this. But, as you can see, there's still twenty more years of this uncertainty that's coming. And I think all of us need to make sure that we encourage the state to make sure that they follow through on our commitment, their commitment, that they were going to be there for us on this, on this issue in particular. The other big one is the state capital budget. Again, going back to about 2005 to 2015, we received a total from the state of eight-hundred-and-fifty-six million, a little over eight-hundred-and-fifty-six million dollars for projects around. So that equates over that ten-year period of about eighty-five million dollars. Over the last five years, it's been twenty-two million dollars total. And one of, and it was, the vast majority of that was one state capital grant. It was twenty million dollars to the Port of Alaska. It's about a four-and-a-half million dollar per year average. So, we're looking at almost a ninety-five percent decrease in the state capital budget for Anchorage. Ninety-five percent. What does that look like over the next couple of years? Just going to run through a number of projects that were completed as a result of the state capital budget. A lot of people in this room, they may live on these streets, they may use these facilities that are on here. I think the question is, without a state capital budget, projects like these are going to be very difficult for the municipality to do. So, take a long look at these, these projects and, and ask yourself, "Do we want to continue to invest in projects like this as we move forward?" And finally, the idea that I was talking about at the very beginning is community dividend. It's an old Wally Hickel idea, it's something that this mayor has advocated for since he's, since he's been in office every single year to the legislature. And essentially, it's based on the percent of market value approach that the legislature adopted a couple of years ago. And essentially, what that means is that the state, they have a sixty-five-billion-dollar permanent fund that spins off through investments, billions of dollars every single year. And what they have said we're going to do, we're going to pull roughly five-and-a-quarter percent out of that every single year to fund a dividend and general government services. So their current structure is fifty-fifty. I think all of us can agree that they still haven't figured out how to do that. But we think this community dividend plan is a way for both municipalities and the state to begin really working together. And the idea behind- And the idea behind the community dividend is we change that structure to essentially a forty-five, forty-five, ten split, where forty-five percent would be used for general government purposes, state general government purposes. Forty-five percent would be dedicated to a personal dividend. And ten percent would go towards the community dividend for municipalities. So what does that look like? This year, the state is anticipating drawing about $3.1 billion out of the permanent fund based on this approach. So it would be about $1.4 billion for state government services, would be about $1.4 billion for the individual dividend, which based on the number of people that applied and received a dividend last year, would equal about a $2,200 dividend this year, which would be, which would set the record for the dividend, the amount of dividend that an individual here in Alaska has received. It would set a record, be the highest amount, 2,200. And then it would do $310 million for a community dividend. And obviously, there would be, need to be details worked out, but it's essentially a way for municipalities and cities around the state to start doing more of the services that the state has historically done, but they said they don't want to do anymore. But for us to be able to do it, we need the capacity to do it. And that comes through this funding mechanism. So going back a couple of slides, if we want to be responsible for school bond debt reimbursement, great, we'll do that, pass this. You want us to invest more in our capital budget? Great, let's get on, let's get, let's figure out a way to make this happen. So with that, I will let the mayor give some closing remarks and then we'll, we'll turn it over. And I'm happy to answer questions either during the public participation point, or I'm happy to stay afterwards and talk with folks about any particular questions that they may have. So I hope people found this valuable, and I look forward to speaking with all of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. That was an excellent tutorial on how the municipal budget works. Excuse me. So I have a problem right here. And I think it should be mandatory for every student in the, in the city to take a look at, as well as perhaps every single voter, so we have a clear understanding. I think one of the most important things we can do in a functioning democratic society is to have informed discussion about who we are, where we want to go. And this is the kind of basic shared understanding that allows us to have that kind of conversation. Because the challenge that's in front of us today is to make an informed choice. What do we want to do? Where do we want to go? Do we want to do nothing? Because if that is our choice, let's make it consciously, not by default. Do we want to do something on our own? And some of the proposals you're going to see from the assembly are about Anchorage continuing to do things on our own. Are we going to implement a sales tax, a payroll tax, an alcohol tax, or a carbon tax? You name it, there's a number of different options that are potentially out there for the municipality to raise additional funds. Or are we going to try and do something in conjunction with the state? That's my personal preference. But these are all decisions that have to be made in a democratic context. And I say this very conscious of the fact that I'm nearing the end of my tenure as mayor. And folks might say that Berkowitz is just trying to get more money for the municipality. Hardly anything that would be done in terms of increased revenue would happen on my watch. So I'm here as an advocate for making sure that the city has momentum to move forward. Because Anchorage has been very fortunate, has been basically well-managed throughout its history. But we have conscious choices to make. And we have conscious choices to make, and we are fortunate to be able to do that. Much of the rest of Alaska is not in that position. So I hope that we have that informed discussion. I'm looking forward to answering questions and hearing comments as we move forward. And at this point, I would imagine the assembly has remained silent for a naturally long period of time for them, would be anxious to take the microphone.
You guys have, you have a call for, you have a two.
Happy to go by, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the other two tax proposals presentations. We'll start with the original version of the alcohol tax sponsored by some of the members, Forrest Dunbar, Austin Davidson, and myself. And for this, Forrest is going to give the presentation.
Thank you, Felix. This will be considered to be shorter. It's actually one of the benefits or one of the positive aspects of the proposal. It is much shorter and simpler than some of the others. Mr. Davidson, Chair Barry, and myself have proposed a five percent tax on retail sale of alcohol that would apply to restaurants, to liquor stores, to bars. It should be available in the back there, I think shortly. Thank you, the course offices came and it is, it's only a few pages. Now, obviously, we just came through an election cycle where we had a alcohol tax on the ballot. And a lot of us spoke in favor of that proposal when it didn't pass. But there were specific critiques of the prior proposal that are addressed by this new alcohol tax. It is a significantly different proposal. And now, I should also mention that none of us are out to get any particular industry. None of us are, you know, thrilled to be proposing a, a tax, but we are looking for realistic ways to raise revenue. This tax proposal would raise between eleven and fifty million dollars are the estimates, and is targeted and dedicated through the ballot managers to three specific areas. First, to public safety. And we spoke with our police and fire chiefs and asked them where they would put this. It would go to patrol officers, it would go to unscored staff, it would go to more data medics and the core team, which Jason had mentioned before, which helps reduce costs. Second, it would go to evidence-based programs that address and reduce the rates of child abuse, sexual assault, and domestic violence. It's something that all of us on the assembly care about. It's something that we know is a scourge in our community. It is also connected to some of the long-term problems in our community, including homelessness. And that's the, the third problem where it's dedicated to go. It will go to substance abuse treatment and prevention programs, treatment for mental health and behavioral health, and some resources to address the homelessness crisis. Now, this ties into something else that Jason touched on, which is the sale of MLP. As part of our agreement to sell MLP, we settled with Providence Hospital, spent $15 million to build a new treatment facility. Now, we need operational dollars to continue to run that facility every time we build it. And these funds could in part be used to run that treatment facility. So again, it gets to some of the root causes of homelessness, which are crime-related, which are substance abuse-related, in some cases are actually traumatic brain injury-related. You know, I'm not going to go through the rest of it. I think we want to have time for, for folks to testify. Again, it's a simple proposal, it's a five percent tax, it's dedicated to those three things. It also cannot go above five percent. So that's an important point that was raised during the last act of it, which people were worried that somehow the assembly could continue to raise the tax. That is not the case, and it's clear in ballot language. If the people of Anchorage vote for this tax, it cannot go above five percent unless, again, there's another vote of the people of Anchorage. The assembly cannot raise it above five percent. So I believe this proposal is significantly different from the one that narrowly failed last year. It is revenue that is desperately needed to address issues of public safety, homelessness, child abuse, and sexual assault.
Thank you. For the third of our proposals, S version to the alcohol tax proposed by some of the members, Willington and Megan Salata. So I'll turn it over. Good job.
Thanks. I took their fine work and improved it on that. So briefly, and I had a few anecdotes, but I didn't have enough for everybody. It removes the use of the funds for public safety, fire, and police. Revenues for operating and rebuilding anything to do with homelessness, drug addiction, alcohol, and mental illness could not be more than half of the cost of many of those things. The tax would initially start at two percent, but again, could go higher with the finances. We have another vote. And it also has, first that's out now has the date start January first, it's posted on February first, but that, I told, was a robust bill if it flips over during the year's celebrations. So I'm going to have to amend it up there, change that date to next day. As for manual report on exactly what was done to the money, and it returns the sixty percent threshold for it to be implemented. And, you know, by removing public safety, that's not the mental public safety, you know, perhaps if you want it, but it will focus more of the money on mental illness, addiction recovery, and homeless services. And that alone will help with public safety. That will cut a lot of costs in the police department. If you leave the public safety in there, it actually is a door wide open to use or convert to anything, because the money could be used for under the tax cap use. And then that money freed up could be used for virtually anything. So that actually opened the door for use by having broadly public safety in there. Revenues can't be used for more than half the cost of anything that we do. And the thing in there is that if we build this recovery center, it will become a statewide aspect, anyone in the state will come and be able to use it. And it's not fair that the neighbor's taxpayers should pay a hundred percent of what will be a statewide facility, but go to four, the state, or nonprofits, or any other source of money to split the cost of this. Tax starts at two percent and go to five percent. I don't think you should tax unless we have something clear to spend on. And I think initially out the gate, we won't need the five percent. As we grow and our operations, recovery centers built and so on, we may need more. But if you can't go over five percent, we don't vote for people. Manual report's very simple, and then the sixty percent. Now, I don't believe it is legal, and we hear it is constitutional, but fifty percent plus one is always required to change our charter, even if it says differently than the charter. But there's a clear expectation, by what's expressed in the charter, that it would be a sixty percent threshold for a tax tax. And I think it should respect that, so I left that in there for this, this version of the alcohol tax.
We're going to go ahead and get ready for the public testimony. So I'm going to go ahead and ask the members to come up and take their seats. So before we begin the testimony discussion portion of our evening, I want to remind everyone that we have two minutes, and any questions asked will be answered after the close of the public testimony. Although not one of the assembly's sponsors are your proposals currently, I want to give a representative from the Project Twenties group an opportunity to kick off the public testimony and inform the public of this resident's legacy. So if everyone is interested to testify, I will enter to the front of what had been given. And again, start off with the representative of Project Twenties.
My name is Lyra Gallagher. I am the campaign director for Project Twenties Anchorage, a citizen and business-led coalition to promote battle initiative in 2020. I am a born Alaskaan, with a deep passion for this community, its people, its businesses, and above all, its potential. My parents were raised in Anchorage, I was raised in Anchorage, I'm currently raising a son here. Anchorage is like a family member to me, perhaps, sometimes I may be one, but I love this city deeply. The city also needs a lot of work. We have been putting needed capital projects on hold for decades. We've created dozens of community plans, as long procedures of community engagement, town halls like these, to develop lists of projects that we need to do to become a modern, thriving city. Thousands of members of the community have participated in these visioning processes over the decades, only to see those plans sit on shelves because of the lack of company and leadership, or a desire to create that one perfect list of capital projects we will never achieve. We are seeing our young people lead Anchorage at high rates to move to other cities where there are greater amenities, easier access to outdoor recreation, and better public safety. We cannot wait any longer to start making our city the destination that it can be for residents, visitors, and for business. Our businesses are crying out for action to stem the loss of talented workers to other cities. My mayor colleague, George Sullivan, was mayor of Anchorage from 1967 to 1922. Along with a number of other city leaders at that time, he was one of the architects of Project Eighties, the last major set of capital investments that he made as a city. Part of the Project Eighties initiative includes the Performing Arts Center, the Lees Hall Library, where we're meeting tonight, the Sullivan Arena, the Anchorage Museum, the Lagoon, and much of our beautiful trail system. I was fortunate to grow up in Anchorage during what might call the golden era of Anchorage, when these facilities were new. And despite the low oil prices of the early nineties, our investments had created a flourishing city. It has been far too long since we have made similar investments. Obviously, during the days of Project Eighties, the money being used to build new infrastructure was quote free. It came from oil royalties during the late seventies boom. But other cities have invested in themselves without the free money party by becoming self-sufficient and paying for improvements to the city themselves, which yields returns over the long term. There's no reason Anchorage cannot do this on our own without the need for federal or state government handouts, oil largess, or other types of other people's money. Project Twenties will raise a temporary three percent sales tax to pay for a dedicated set of capital projects, including a citywide trail rehabilitation, roadside fire evacuation loads, redevelopment of Ship Creek, infrastructure upgrades on downtown streets to encourage access and business development, as well as the creation of the Anchorage Housing Trust, an endeavor that would cover operating expenses associated with permanent support of housing and behavioral health treatment. The tax will raise $375 million automatically sunset once that money is raised. It cannot be renewed or extended. Revenues would also go into a small business assistance fund, and there would be many exceptions, including gassing in groceries and medicine, as well as a one-week back-to-school holiday each year. Other communities have instituted temporary sales taxes upon capital projects, most notably a nearby Whassilla just up the road, which increased their sales tax in 2001 in order to build a much-needed sports center. Revenues exceeded projections and the tax went away a year earlier than originally forecasted. And the community now has a new sports facility for schools and hockey teams.
You can have that, please.
I'm now a paid campaign consultant for a professional politician, and a mom, and an Alaskan, and a person who cares deeply about the future of her community. I urge you to strongly consider Project Twenties as a ready measure this year. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Jesse. I have been an Alaska and Anchorage resident for forty years. Previously, for twenty-three years, I was the CEO of a mental health trust authority in the area of the College of Health at UAA. I'm speaking, obviously, as a prior citizen. We absolutely need an alcohol tax. The Mental Health Trust several years ago did an analysis through the McDowell Group of what the total cost of alcohol use is throughout the state, if you include corrections and public health and healthcare, et cetera, et cetera. It gave you $1.2 billion. If that was a department in this municipality, it would be a $750 million department. And we're asking for a five percent tax that would raise maybe $14 million. It's interesting to me that the industry, which I work very closely with to develop an overhaul of the Title IV alcohol regulatory structure, which we're still trying to get past, argues that somehow it's unfair to ask people who drink to pay for the consequences of alcohol abuse in the community. What other business is able to take the waste from their product and put it out on the street and expect the municipality and the property taxpayers to come and clean it up for them? I can't even push the excess snow from my driveway into the street and have the municipality do it. Why is that somehow more fair than an alcohol tax that taxes people based on how much of the problem that you are? If you drink nothing at all, you pay nothing. If you drink very little, we pay very little. Those that drink the most pay the most, and that's where the consequences come from. I prefer the original version of the alcohol tax, but I want to say one more critical thing. Even though this is an improvement, and it's much more specific about where the money will go, if we don't have enough money for a campaign to offset the repetitive advertising that the industry will do, this will not succeed. If we haven't raised $175 million minimum by the time you vote, do not put any tax on ballot. Thank you.
Oh, my name's David Carter, and I am a retired attorney living here in Anchorage. We all know the elephant in the room is Senate Bill 21. We're losing about $900 million to $1 billion a year in state unrestricted general fund revenue. It's a wonderful time also to be an investigative journalist, because... It's a wonderful time to be an investigative journalist, because you can go to our business initiative, of course, hopefully evolved, first, Last's Spirit Share, and another website, VoteYesForLast'sSpiritShare.com, lots of information there. You might be surprised to wonder that despite industry messaging that for somehow a high price per state, kind of bill is described as the Wall Street in its 2018 report as a low cost source of revenue. We have to pay attention to that information. We can't ignore it. It's costing us $900 million to a billion dollars. That affects all sorts of initial operations, as of course, all sorts of state operations. So the sources are VoteYesForLast'sSpiritShare.com, and I have some information, but you'll hang around. Lots of information there from former legislators. And then the other general source for why the governor hasn't proposed some change to, you know, a small return for historic production tax, can be found in the Dark Money Documentary. If you haven't seen it, you should see it. It's a million point of view, really, and you just... That's my... Yeah, Dark Money, I can talk, I'll hang around, because this information is very important and more than the news media in the world will follow. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Moylan, and I'm a resident of Anchorage and here to speak about why I think the tax is important to be shared equally by all members of our community. Friendly, I have never agreed with inequality. I've served on the identity board of directors for four years these years, because I felt so strongly about things being equal. Currently, I hold two jobs, one is a yoga instructor and the other is the operations manager of Bridge Seafood Restaurant and Bridge Theater. Previously, I was in fundraising and development for three area nonprofits, one of which we have a report for heading up Humans vs. My 10 years' experience allows me to unabashedly share a pointy piece of the internal workings of an NPO regarding how and from whom money is raised and just how people work together to do it effectively with a business mind towards ethics and efficiency. In management, annual accounting, multiple means of raising cash and awareness. Friends and fundraisers and fundraisers peppered them up. Development rarely crossed over with the folks on the programming side at the Health and Safety Org I work for. They were always overworked. But the other two orgs always had crossover. It made sense. The right hand always knew what the left hand was doing. That served on numerous occasions to make a stronger team ask, and it served well in the public eye. It also prevented serious mistakes, asking the same person twice, or the same business twice, not tracking the asks, and not following through with proper thank yous, all part of a breakdown of a good business model. I had a list of restaurants and owners of businesses whom I always asked, and I constantly tried to ask different ones when I was a developing person. Would they get it for free? Would they give a deep discount? If I got something from someone else for free, could I use it? And they're establishing and thus not have to pay for it. This is the mantra of an NPO fundraiser, and all of these, to all of those fine people, we love to ask to help our bottom line. It goes on to this day, but will it continue? And why haven't some executive directors or organization knows plenty? Why do they keep silent about it when their programming people stand up and talk about programming for homeless people? We all know that it affects us emotionally. I am in favor of the Project 20's. I feel it's a great project and it needs to be presented. I believe that we should equally share in taxes. Please tax me. I want to be taxed. I appreciated your presentation and showed the reason and the logic behind it. Let's start fresh. Let's start real. In 2020. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Earl Kreiger. I have lived in Alaska about 40 years, and wasn't happy that in Anchorage. I normally am not supportive of any kind of general sales tax because it's so aggressive. I have worked tirelessly trying to get the state to implement a income tax, because I think that's important for funding our state. But here in Anchorage, the taxes on the table we're talking about today have to do with a sin tax. And I'm all for a sin tax, but you lumped out a few of them. Baiting should be in there at a very high level. I think we need to think about, if you're going to do a sin tax, add in the rest of the sins. I sin, I'll pay tax on it. It's all right, I don't want it. The other thing I wish you'd thought about, and I sent you a letter on this quite a while ago, is a toll tax for coming into town. Right in the clout, I think you'll remember that, for most of you on the... That will generate some money for the city if the government needs them. Governor Dunleavy, when he was talking about cuts, or going to municipalities, he says, "You guys figure it out." This is how you can figure it out. A toll tax coming into the city, five dollars a pay coming in. When I go into San Francisco, it was eight dollars every time. So, need to think about it. Thank you very much.
Hello, good evening. My name is Patrick Cooper. I'm one of the owners of Bridge Seafood, independent restaurant in town here. And I'm just talking a little bit about how it affects our industry and some other options and other pieces of the pie that are not taken into consideration when we talk about taxation. First and foremost, you have a tough job, and we know that. Coming year, it was pretty gloomy and a budget ask actually looking at. But as an independent restaurant and hospitality owner, I feel strong compassion due to my community, Anchorage. Through my ability as an independent business owner, I've had the opportunity, pride, and honor to partner with many local charities. Through these partnerships, in the last eight years, Bridge Seafood has assisted in raising millions of dollars for local charities through those partnerships. Bridge Seafood employs over 50 people annually and putting it back in the community about 80 to 95% of that's what our gross sales. We do it through property taxes, wages, utilities, or product procurement, we put it back. Why do we do this? Because we are Anchorage. This is our community. My children are born and raised here and attend a public school here. We can all agree that lost revenue needs to be reclaimed and budgets need to reflect restraint. The proud, confident citizen of Anchorage, I feel the undue burden of an alcohol tax. As in most businesses, costs only go up. The hospitality is not, the industry is not immune from this. Our cost of doing business is very high and our margins are low, causing many Anchorage independent bars and restaurants to either squeeze by, sell, or shut down. Property tax, the alcohol tax, is only one piece of the pie that we have to deal with in our economic pressures. You combine that tax with the factors of minimum wage increases, annual seasonal cost increases, Seafood alone has gone up massively this year, utility increases, MLP mine is up 30% this year, limited labor force and high competition on those resources. And then you have a price point piece that you have to take into consideration. A guest, be a tourist, be a local, is only going to pay so much for that product and service, so worried about that cost. The preferred option would be to have incentives and stimulation for small businesses as opposed to more taxing. We need to grow our economy and keep our small independent businesses alive. Alaska is consistently listed as top 10 states with the highest alcohol taxes. If you're going to tax, tax across the board, be fair about it. Don't leave one piece of the industry you have to deal with. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Mark Mary. He's an Anchorage resident for over 20 years, and I will tell you, none of these taxation proposals are any good at all. You don't tax responsible drinkers to solve a problem because somebody overabuses alcohol. Okay? Let's get rid of that right now. What we need to do is we need to lower the amount of spending and put this mayor in assembly and accountable. We need to do that first, and limit the spending. That's what needs to happen. No taxation proposal on the ballot would be the best thing ever. So let's do it that way, and limit the spending. Stop the spending unnecessary to pay. Let's close the police academy. We don't need 200 extra cops, because 120 extra cops aren't doing the job when you have a mayor that says, "Stand down, stand down, tell the police chief to stand down."
Hi, I'm Lily Yoroff. I write science fiction, and my life is a bit complicated. Deflectively, some years I have made $6,000 and some years I've made $50,000. Well, even that year that I made only $6,000, I had to pay $4,000 in property tax, which is a real burden. It's rough. And I know that there's other people who it becomes this major difficulty, they can even lose their housing because they can't pay property tax. So, you know, one thing they say is you should cut services. Well, that's not good. That's just going to rise the property taxes more, because we lose population, then our bill rate goes up, and our property tax goes up again. So we need to pay for these services. I believe that we need income tax on, excuse me, income tax on the state level, and sales tax on the municipal level. With the sales tax, you have to pay the sales tax of the place where the buyer owns. That's where you pay the sales tax. So if you put a sales tax in Anchorage, you will be getting that sales tax off of the things bought online. Amazon will pay the sales tax from Anchorage. So I think that's a better way to go actually than the alcohol tax, because I think I would bring in more money. And it'd also end up taxing me, because I don't pay my alcohol. But I would be paying my fair share by paying my sales tax. Do not want to see a wage tax, because wage tax taxes people who are working, but not people for capital gains. Now, I get also income from paying capital gains. If you put in a wage tax, I don't have to pay. The people who have money won't be paying, because they're getting capital gains, not getting their money from wages.
If you could wrap it up, please?
Go.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Tiffany Halt. I was born and raised here in Anchorage. I left for about 12 years and then moved back eight years ago, because I really love it here and my whole family is here. It's where I wanted to raise my new family. And just as a community member and as a voter, I am in favor of taxes across the board. I've lived in a lot of other places with sales taxes, minimum taxes. I under, I'm a person who is happy to pay them in order to get the services that I would like to receive. And I really appreciate Jason Meyer's presentation that very clearly showed how much less we are receiving from the state and that we probably shouldn't be expecting to get a lot more of that in the coming years. In case I didn't know from your presentation, I certainly felt that this summer, when we were all very much aware of the vetoes. So I'm primarily in favor of the alcohol tax, in part because I've also been here for a long time, and I hope it'd be more difficult to pass a sales tax, just in talking to my neighbors and fellow community members. I'm also the executive director of Recover Alaska, and we're an organization that works to reduce excessive alcohol use and harms across the state. So I know that an alcohol tax will save lives. I know that raising the state excise alcohol tax here in 2002 saved lives. I know that it reduced disease. I know that it reduced other harms of alcohol. I know that's been proven as a best practice around the nation. And I know that that's not necessarily something that will pass the bill, but it's very important to me in my work that right now, where Alaskans are dying at three times the rate of the national level, it's really important we do anything and everything we can to save lives based on alcohol. We also are not the highest taxed in the nation. The other one, she loves to perpetuate that, but in fact, we look at sales taxes and other taxes combined here in the bottom half of the nation in terms of alcohol taxes. I appreciate your time.
Good evening.
My name is Christine Hill. I'm running for Anchorage Assembly, I think that's okay to say. Mark Mary, you have staged me. That's okay. So I'm here to say that I certainly support the fire department. I certainly support the police department. But I do not support throwing more money at problems that are, that need to be solved. And money is not going to solve it. And I say very simply, no more BS. No more becoming Seattle. No more becoming Seattle. That is where we're going with this. So I think there are other ways to solve this problem, and it was a great presentation. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name's Don Grasby. I'm the president of K&L Distributors. And a year ago, I testified at the assembly meeting against the alcohol tax. And one of the things that I communicated is that the industry would fight this tax like we have in the past, and beat it at the ballot box, as we did eight months ago, and as we did in the early 90s. That's the same thing that would happen with the current version of the alcohol tax that's being proposed. During my talk a year ago, I indicated that most of the industry, everyone that I know, is not in opposition of a broad-based tax. And I know of no opposition out there for a broad-based tax. And we would support a hack-out company as well, so that's not what I'm saying.
Good evening. I heard a comment about comparison to Cincinnati earlier. Is that the city that was used? And I just got curious about that, so I went to a website where they compare cities. And turns out, their murder rate has doubled. The rate is by half, so that's good. There's more robbery. So this gets to the point where, again, throwing money at things doesn't do it. I don't have a problem with taxes if I know that my money's being used wisely, if it's being performance managed, if the projects that the city takes on initiatives are actually being managed to deliver something other than jobs for the people who are getting paid by them. Unfortunately, that's who often shows up at these meetings and makes such a big mess. That's not so much the case tonight, but that's often the case. So again, if it's going to pass, that's almost certain, because you usually manage to get this stuff through. What are you going to really deliver with it? Is it going to really make a difference? Or is it just going to be more churn and burn? And I get a little worked up, because it's just, it tears me up that money gets taken from people, and then crap gets given to them on the terms of the quality of what these cities, state, and federal actually does with the money that they take from us. And they take from people that work hard for it. It's really pitiful. And every time we do this process, we propagate that, that confiscation and delivery of a substantial product. You've got to performance-manage your projects, your initiatives, otherwise, all you're doing is confiscating and burning. Okay? And the other thing, if we're going to have a toll tax, you ought to put it on the outbound, because that's going to be, that's going to go for you.
Sir, what's your name? For the record.
James Kaufman. Hey.
Hi, my name is Tim Ling. I've been a resident of Anchorage for about 18 years. A lot of information tonight, it is very good. It seems to me we have a concern with revenue streams more than anything else. You tend to rely primarily on property tax, which is time to modernize. Are your revenue streams even looking at from a revenue neutral point of view? Whether that's sales tax or whatever. I guess that reminds me of one study. What I would ask you to do, though, is, as you deliberate these various proposals to the ballot, don't build anything unless you have the money to operate it. You have facilities in Anchorage now that you can't pay for, that you can't operate. And I've been in touch with Chris Constance over a couple of weeks, in the last month or so. So unless you've got money to build it, I'm sorry, unless you've got money to run it, as someone pointed earlier with the trade movement, we can build it, but if you don't have the money to run it, we get too much of that right now. So do it rationally. I'm not quite sure how that is done. I don't envy any of you, your job is to believe in it. So all I can say is good luck. whether that's sales tax or whatever, I guess that reminds me of what I'm saying. What I would ask you to do though is, as you deliberate these various proposals to the ballot, don't build anything unless you have the money to operate it. You have facilities in Anchorage now that you can't pay for, that you can't operate. And I've been in touch with Chris Constance over a couple of these in the last month or so. So unless you've got money to build it, I'm sorry, unless you've got money to run it. As someone pointed earlier with the treatment center, we can build it, but if you don't have the money to run it, we get too much of that right now. So do it rationally. I'm not quite sure how that is done. I don't envy any of you in your, your jobs, believe me. So all I can say is good luck.
My name is Laura Herman. I was born on Cuyahoga Island, lived in Alaska, or Anchorage for last ten years. I really strongly support an alcohol tax. I just did some quick calculations. For a typical dinner out at Pangio or wherever, I spend eight to ten bucks on a bottle of wine. And if I get an eight dollar bottle of wine, I get two of them. I'm going to pay eighty cents. Eight zero cents towards people who need places to live, who need access to treatment facilities, people who need access to domestic violence and suspense. Dear Lord, I'm so lucky to pay that eighty cents. And let's say I go to Brandon, I can buy a really nice thirty dollar bottle of wine. I'm going to pay a dollar fifty. Now, if I'm going to spend thirty dollars on a bottle of wine, I'm probably going to spend thirty one fifty on a bottle of wine. And so I come back around again, working with youth who are experiencing homelessness and working with people who are using syringe access services for active rehabilitation from meth and heroin. And those folks frequently would come to us and say, I'm ready. I want to get into treatment services. I'm ready to leave my abusive relationship. I want to have access to a program to change my life and to take control. And we had to tell them, sorry, there's a three-month waiting list to get into any sort of parent treatment program. Sorry, the domestic violence shelter is completely full. Sorry, there's no resources available to you. And when we look at the state and see that they are not interested in legal services or legal services for the people who need help here, the responsibility then falls to us and what we can do. And we can pay eighty cents on top of our dinner out to support people who are in crisis so that we're not seeing people on the streets having conflict and having no access or pathway out. We're actually helping each other and helping raise each other up. So I strongly support a five percent tax. Starting at two percent because maybe we don't need five percent is the most laughable thing I've heard. I was like Mr. Middleton. I'm so sorry. We need so much treatment and resources to help these programs to support our neighbors because they are in crisis. And we can point at them on the street or we can actually do something to support each other.
Hi, my name is John Davis. I live on the east side. And I don't mind paying my fair share of taxes. I've been paying property taxes for almost thirty years now in Anchorage. But what I'm dismayed about is why politicians always pay the taxes first? You know, you as an example, you should be an American. You should be trying to bring in some outside industries for Anchorage to build up our revenue so we can do some of the things you want to do. I mean, it's taxes. We're trying to help people. Sometimes these people may want to help themselves. I heard on a video tonight, the guy says, I'd rather live in a tank, a tank. Well, when are we going to start holding these drunks and people like they are responsible for their own actions? And these native corporations are making billions of dollars. How come we're not getting them engaged in what's going on? And these native villages, they'll ban these natives out of the villages. And where do they end up? They end up in Anchorage and fare rights, homeless, okay? So, I mean, we need to get everybody engaged. And what bothers me is that when you, when you're thinking about extra revenue, you always think about taxes first. You should be working with the state as a, as a city assembly. You should be working with the state to try to bring in some more revenue. And whether that be the bill and toll taxes work out pretty good. You could designate poker room money to the, to the schools. You can, you know, pick up off casinos. We've got to think outside the box because if you need this revenue, I mean, we've got to make some changes. They already approved marijuana. I mean, why not casinos and poker room? There's twenty poker rooms that operate illegally in the city anyways. You know, some of them bring in three, four thousand dollars on a good night. Tax that money. You know, tax each table late. And all I want you to do is think outside the box and let this tax go. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Nichols. I work at the Wifeyo at the beginning of Anchorage, moved in eighty-one. I make my living first as a server, plus a boy bartender. I don't sleep with murderers. I like it too. I don't want to call you dispatch, Aaron. Seven eight six eight five hundred is that number as far as I know. On emergency, I think it's like seven. They'll show up, okay. They show up right away. They deal with people that I constantly apologize to. These aren't my patrons. These aren't my friends. These are just people who live with me, okay? So we have to take care of them. I believe that alcohol tax is wrong because you're missing the biggest picture of all of this. If you're trying to raise revenue and you want to have a beverage tax, why aren't you taxing all the beverages? Do you know how much coffee we drink in this town? I mean, five percent. If you want to deal with mental health issues and treatment, which I completely agree with, this picture is not the third essence you're going to add to the price I sell for the beer, okay? The issue, why not address it at its core? Why isn't pharmaceutical companies being taxed on their drugs? If we're all talking about treatment centers and heroin problems, all these addictions, you're talking about one half of the picture. I mean, why not deal with all of it as a whole standpoint? And I'm not against a sales tax, so I could come up with a total of it, but I think it needs to be broad-based, okay? Thank you for your time. You have a tough job.
Hello, my name is Julianne Brennan-Lonskaw. And I've been a resident of Anchorage for about fifteen years. And, you know, I've been working with nonprofits lately and, and I, my husband owns a restaurant. And I noticed something about many of the incredible nonprofits in this town. Catholic Social Services, Covenant House, Salvation Army, all of them are these absolutely amazing nonprofits. And a lot of them raise their revenue through galas, through Mayor Sherry Ball, through many of these things. They raise money for their nonprofits through restaurant gift cards, which they generously donate. The alcohol distributors give the wine to these events for free. They give a lot for this community. Every sporting event is sponsored by a restaurant, by the liquor industry in some way or another, a beer or whatever, a softball team. They do a lot for this community and you're asking them to do more and more and more. And it's just going to drive more and more restaurants away. We need restaurants. They're our community. They're where we come together. They're where we all meet our friends. We need restaurants. We need to come together as a community. And it's one of the places that we can do it without politics, where, you know, the mayor walks in and so does a new mother. It's a very important place. And I think by just taxing a small segment, you're not helping those people who are helping the community. I think you need to look at how they do help rather than how they hurt. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mary. And some of the members. So, I just, just for point clarity, the Project Twenty, could that end up on the ballot as well as one of the three other sales taxes? Or, okay, good. Okay, so.
So, as I stated earlier, January fourteenth, we are going to be delivering the three proposals that you have before us. Project Twenty's has not been introduced. So if it does get introduced on January fourteenth, then the earliest that it could be voted on is January twentieth.
So, to my only concern is that, you know, there's a young population of families here in the city. And when we look at other cities outside of ours, like Wausau, we see that they're exponentially growing. I know that state finance committee, they're looking at proposing a state broad-based sales tax. And I just want to know, like, you know, my concern is when we look at the other tax that are being proposed in Project Twenty, what does that do to the young families that might leave an exodus to go to the places like Wausau? We talked about retaining that population, but I don't think we're going to retain them. You know, we, we might see that at a state level, if we see these taxes at the city level, and what property taxes do now. So that would be my concern. Really, I think it's a little bad. Thank you.
Could you give us two names, sir?
Rick and Steel.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for testifying. Before I turn it over to my, the vice chair, Suzanne France, to get some closing remarks, I just want to let everyone know that at muni.org, if you go to the assembly page, all of these presentations and the various ordinances are available there. So you can find them back at muni.org.
Well, thanks again to all of you for coming here tonight to this town hall. We truly appreciate your feedback and your willingness to engage in this dialogue. I want to recognize that we all came here today because we care about our community very much and we want to make sure that future generations of residents of the municipality have as much opportunity as possible to enjoy their lives here in Anchorage. This conversation today is a really good start to continue the dialogue, but it's hoped to be a continuing for residents of the municipality. We know that the issues we face aren't going to disappear in a year, maybe not in five years. But in working together, we can make progress and keep the municipality moving forward. So please continue your conversations in coffee shops and around the dinner table. And the next time you offer these opportunities for dialogue, I hope you come back. Two final things before we close shop. First, to vote on, there's an opportunity to vote on each of the three proposals. And if you go in the back, you will get a sticker which you can place. Is it one sticker? Do you miss?
Yeah, so it's.
Okay. Okay, you get two stickers and you can rank your choices. And as you leave, if you can go ahead and place your stickers on your favorite ones to rank it, that's the first thing. We value your immediate feedback, especially because we're going to be deliberating during our regular assembly meeting. And students are going to be, of course, whenever you combine it to attend. So the second thing is that the meeting will be in the assembly chambers and it begins at five. Public hearing items begin no earlier than six P M., although we likely won't get to the public hearing on the various tax proposals until maybe about eight, six thirty P M. I know it's kind of hard to gauge when the public testimony starts. Anyway, again, thank you all so very much for coming and safe and warm travels. Take care.